I'm going to call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for the City of Hayward on February 28th, I'm sorry, March 28th, 2024. We're holding a hybrid meeting with some participants in the council chambers and others who have joined virtually via Zoom. This meeting is being webcast on Comcast TV Channel 15 and livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and on the city website. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Potos, will you please take role?
Commissioner Stevens, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Present.
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Present.
Commissioner Patterson?
Present.
Commissioner Myers?
Present.
Chair Lowe?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open the public comments section. The public comments section provides an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda. The Commission welcomes comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner within established time limits and focus on issues which directly affect the city or are within the jurisdiction of the city. As the Commission is prohibited by state law from discussing items not listed on the agenda, your items will be taken under consideration and may be referred to staff for further action. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a Commission meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend the Commission meetings and discriminatory statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive, or per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Ms. Potos, do we have any public comments at this time?
Chair Lowe, we do not have any attendees in the chambers.
All right, I'm going to close public comments at this time and we will move to the first item on the agenda, which is a proposed installation of three telecommunication monopoles along the parapet of an existing parking garage located at 27303 Sleepy Hollow Avenue, APN 455-0026-024-03, requiring the approval of conditional use application number UP-24-0004 for a Class III facility and finding that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Applicant Christy Andress Erickson, owner Joseph Christ Kaiser Permanente. May we hear from city staff on this item, please?
Thank you, Chair Lowe. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rosalyn Thompson, Senior Planner. So yes, the item currently before you is a proposal to remove an existing monopole telecommunication facility located on the roof parking surface of a three-story parking garage and the installation of three monopoles next to the parapet of the parking garage with associated equipment at 27303 Sleepy Hollow Avenue. So the proposed project requires one entitlement, a conditional use permit, per our antenna and wireless communications facilities ordinance. Antenna mounted on either monopole or tower support structures and related facilities greater than 40 feet in height located in any commercial or agricultural district require a conditional use permit. In this case, the monopoles are mounted on a structure, the parking garage, located in a commercially zoned property, and the height from the ground to top of the antenna is 73 feet four inches. Therefore, a conditional use permit is required. As for the site details, the project site is 4.95 acres and is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Sleepy Hollow Avenue and Tennyson Road. The project site is irregularly shaped, relatively flat, and is bounded by a multi-tenant commercial development to the west, Sleepy Hollow Avenue to the east, Tennyson Road to the south, and a multifamily development to the north. The site is developed with a medical office building located in the southern portion of the project site and a three-story parking garage sited near the western property line. Additional parking is provided by a surface parking lot occupying the northern end of the project site. The site is accessed from Sleepy Hollow Avenue via a two-way access drive. The zoning of the site is CO, Commercial Office, and the general plan land use designation is Public Quasi Public, PQP, and Retail and Office Commercial, or ROC. As for the background history of the site, according to city records, the parking garage was approved in 1981 and the medical office building was approved in 1983. The date that the existing monopole was approved and installed is unknown. On April 21st, 2020, a telecommunications site plan review application to remove the existing monopole and install three monopoles was approved. On September 14th, 2023, the applicant submitted a revised application to modify the previous approval. Due to an error on the records relied upon by the applicant, the height of the parapet and the height of the parking garage surface were miscalculated and they were eight feet lower than the height measured in the field. After submitting building permits, the height of the parapet and garage were verified in the field. As a result, the height of the monopoles is eight feet higher than previously anticipated. The applicant revised the building permit set of plans accordingly but was directed by the Planning Division for further guidance. Given that the actual height of the wireless communication facility is eight feet higher than the original approval, the proposed project requires a conditional use permit. All other aspects of the application remain unchanged from the previous approval. As for the project details, the project consists of removing the existing monopole with six antennas located in the center of the roof parking surface, installing three new monopoles with three antennas each behind the western parapet wall, and as measured from grade, the height of the monopoles will be 73 feet four inches, also installing 15 remote radio units, or RRUs, and ancillary equipment, and replacing two equipment cabinets located inside the existing equipment area. Here is the proposed site plan with existing conditions shown on the plan. The medical office building is located at the upper right-hand corner of the project site while the surface parking lot is located to the left of it. The antennas will be located on the parking structure, which is located at the lower portion of the site. This is a partial site plan depicting only the parking structure. The existing monopoles to be removed is located at the center of the roof parking surface. All three of the new antennas will be located behind the western parapet, which is at the bottom of the site plan. Two of the three monopoles will be immediately adjacent to each other while the third parapet will be approximately 190 feet to the south of the two other monopoles. The existing equipment cabinet will remain at its current location, which is the northwest corner of the parking structure. Here's an elevation of the existing monopole. The existing monopole is approximately 56 feet above ground level, and the monopole and attached antennas will all be removed. Here is an elevation of the three new monopoles. The maximum height is 73 feet four inches above ground level. Three antennas will be mounted on each monopole for a total of nine antennas. Ancillary equipment will be located adjacent to each pole. The next three slides consist of staff's analysis of the project against the general plan, the antenna and wireless communication facilities ordinance, and the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. As for the general plan, the project complies with public facilities and services policies PFS-9.1, 9.2, and 9.3 because the project ensures access to and availability of a wide range of state-of-the-art telecommunication systems and services for households, businesses, institutions, public spaces, and public agencies throughout the city, expands service to areas that are not served by telecommunication technologies, and encourages compatible co-location of telecommunication facilities. As demonstrated in Attachment 2, which is attached to the staff report, the proposed project is consistent with conditional use permit findings in the zoning ordinance, and those conditional use permit findings are listed here. The proposed project also meets the general requirements and applicable design criteria in the antenna and telecommunications facility ordinance. In particular, the proposed project continues the existing setback of a non-conforming structure, is not placed in direct line of sight of significant view corridors or where they affect scenic vistas, and the existing equipment area screening will be maintained, which will continue to minimize visibility from the public right-of-way. As for SEQA, the project is exempt from further environmental review under Section 15303, New Construction and Conversion of Small Structures of the SEQA Guidelines. It is exempt because the installation of three monopoles is considered a utility extension, a construction of a new small structure, and therefore is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15303 of the SEQA Guidelines. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve conditional use permit application number UP-24-0004 and determine that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15303 of the SEQA Guidelines for the installation of three Class III telecommunication monopoles. That concludes staff's presentation on this item. Staff is available for any questions that the Commission may have, and the applicant should also be in attendance remote as well.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation or just answer questions?
We can ask ahead of the applicant. The applicant is Christy Andress.
Ms. Andress?
Yes, hello. I'm available to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to open it up for Commissioner questions then. Do any Commissioners have questions? Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, staff, for the presentation. I just have one quick question, and it's more of a curiosity. So I was just wondering why the existing monopole was in the center of the roof and why these three would be on the western parapet? Like, is there a reason for that? Not that we... It looks like they won't be very visible either, but I was just wondering if there's like, just a reason that that would be preferable for the new ones?
Okay, can you still hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I don't have a direct answer for that. I imagine that in the design stages, they figured that it was a better design to put the monopoles on the parapet edge?
Does staff want to help with the answer?
I think I can elaborate a little bit more. Applicants tend to decide when they need to invest in new facilities and upgrades to their networks, and this is part of it, whether it's removal of an existing monopole, as the case here, and replacing it with new equipment, or if there are upgrades to existing equipment. In my professional experience, the factors that usually drive communication tower installation upgrades are usually the increase in demand for service, potential gaps in coverage, a reduction in network speed, and improvements to telecommunication equipment. So this usually necessitates an increase in antenna size or the number of antennas. So that's my professional experience and usually why we get applications to modify an existing facility.
Yep, I would agree with that. I was more trying to answer the question to the exact design, why we were moving from the middle of the parking structure to the edges. But yes, of course, that was a very appropriate answer about upgrading the telecommunication facility. Thank you.
Thank you both for your answers. So can I maybe infer from that that there maybe is a reason that that's actually an upgrade, like that there could be, like, better service even because they're not in the middle of the garage versus on the...
That's correct.
That is always the design objective. Whenever AT&amp;T has new technology that they can roll out to upgrade a facility, we meet as a team to talk about those technology upgrades. May they be different frequencies that operate at a higher capacity, or moving a site around, adjusting azimuths or heights so that they can cover a broader area. These are all considerations that we would take into account.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. I have just a few questions, I believe, for the staff. It says, based on Hayward Municipal Code, that anything over 40 feet requires the conditional use permit. They're going to be 73 feet, I believe, four inches, and because they've been raised up eight feet, it triggers the conditional use permit. But when I subtract eight feet from 73, I'm still higher than that 40 feet. So I'm just kind of curious, on the first go-around, why shouldn't that have really triggered the conditional use permit? Because it's over 40 feet?
So I wasn't here for the first go-arounds, but my... Just my recollection of what happened was that was because of the design and because of it not being as high, it was approved under a Class I facility because it was concluded that it wasn't... That it couldn't be viewed from the public right-of-way. So because this is a substantial change in height, eight feet, that kicked it into conditional use permit territory.
Oh, okay, I see. Thank you. And then also, I was up on the roof, and I see three large empty poles on the west side, which I believe is where they're going to be putting these. Are those poles that are currently there, and nothing's on them, are those currently part of this project that maybe was started back in April 2021?
The applicant can elaborate on that. So my understanding is that a building permit was pulled, they had started work, they realized that there was a miscalculation in the field, and they had stopped working on the facility.
That would make perfect sense.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And then one last thing, I think one last, maybe two. Because you're so high above ground, or the highest thing around, is there some kind of study or anything that has been done or should be done for lightning strikes?
That's not typically something that we would address. We do follow all regulations in terms of RF safety and filing with the FAA and FCC. The FAA would be the agency that would be controlling when it comes to things like heights.
Okay, thank you for that. And one last question. I noticed on the blueprints, the AT&amp;T Equipment Room has a Halon system, and as far as I know, I thought Halon was prohibited anymore. Is that something that is addressed during this?
To my knowledge, it hasn't been. I can look into whether that Halon system is even active at this point. A lot of the older sites did have Halon systems, and they remain in place without actually being active.
Okay. Thank you both for those answers, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Goodbody?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. You actually answered my first question about the factors that drive cell tower upgrades and installations. My question to the applicant was, I'm concerned about the noise generated from the equipment room, particularly from the HVAC that might impact residents on Aldingate and then the businesses directly to the west of the monopoles. Was there any feedback or any comments that you received during your outreach?
To my knowledge, there was no feedback from the public. This is, again, not a new cellular site. It's been in... It's been in continuous service for many years, and there have not been any complaints to my knowledge. So I wouldn't imagine that would be any different now.
Thanks.
And staff would like to add to that answer?
Go ahead.
So also, as part of a condition of approval, they have to comply with our noise ordinance. So in terms of, you know, addressing any noise concerns, they have to comply and be within the noise limits in our noise ordinance.
I appreciate that. I think that my concern was mostly with the residents with those apartment buildings on Aldingate that might have closer proximity to the equipment room rather than the businesses on the west side because there's, you know, it's kind of a... Trucks are coming in and out of that area, so won't be so impacted. But with the residents, I was concerned about that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So why don't we open it up to public comment then? Is there any public comment on this item?
Should now.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment at this time and open up for Commissioner comments. Or I can entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
A second. Oops, may we please have a roll call vote? Commissioner Stevens, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Chair Lowe?
Yes.
And item number one passes with five yeses and one person who isn't here. So let's move on to the second item on the agenda, which is a proposed development of 12 townhomes, townhome condominium units and related site improvements on a 0.39 acre site at 22872 Main Street, APN 427-0001-046-01, requiring approval of tentative track map for condominium purposes, 8678, and site plan review application number TM-23-0004, and an exemption for residential projects implementing specific plans pursuant to Section 15182 of the California Environmental Quality Act. Murthy Jaeger for Hammara, applicant, on behalf of Ude Sista and Swati Papu, owners. May we hear from city staff? Do you have a presentation for us today?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Planning Commission and Hayward community. I am Taylor Richard, Associate Planner with the City of Hayward Planning Division. And as Chair Lowe said, we are going to be reviewing a tentative track map, site plan review, and SEQA exemption for a new residential development at 22872 Main Street. The project site is located in downtown Hayward, adjacent to Foothill Boulevard, right along the loop. It is in close proximity to many commercial businesses, including a grocery store, open spaces, including Heritage Plaza and the Bret Hart Playfields, public facilities, including Hayward City Hall, where we are tonight, and Bret Hart Middle School, and public transit, including the Hayward Bart Station and several AC transit lines. Zooming in, the site at 22872 Main Street is a L-shaped 0.39 acre parcel with frontages along Armstrong Street, Main Street, and E Street. The site is located within the downtown specific plan area, specifically within the urban neighborhood zoning district. The intent of this zoning district is to create a walkable mixed-use neighborhood with moderate intensity housing development within walking distance to neighborhood-serving retail and service uses. It has a corresponding land use designation of C-CROC, our City Center Retail and Office Commercial, in the Hayward 2040 general plan. Additionally, the site is located within the Alquas Priolo Fault Zone and will be required to comply with all applicable requirements to ensure the building is seismically sound. The site is currently developed with an approximately 2,000-square-foot drive-through and restaurant and parking lot, as seen in the photos on the screen. The original restaurant building was constructed in 1972, and the drive-through was added in 1981. It is important to note that the existing buildings were constructed prior to the Alquas Priolo Earthquake Fault Zoning Act and other seismic regulations. The images on the top left and bottom right are the view from Main Street. The image on the top right is the view from Armstrong Street, and the image on the bottom left is the view from E Street. This project proposes to demolish that existing drive-through restaurant and construct 12 new townhome units in two separate buildings. One of the buildings will be a rectangular one with frontage along Armstrong Street, and the other building will be an L-shaped building with frontage along Main and E Street. The buildings will be separated by a two-way driveway and an internal walkway, both with access from Main Street. A clustered mailbox will be located along that private driveway near Main Street, providing for eyes on the street and making it challenging to break into unnoticed. Each building will be three stories tall and contain six townhouse units. Each unit will have four bedrooms, three and a half baths, and a two-car garage. The development employs a contemporary design with ample facade articulation and massing brakes. This includes orials, balconies, recesses, modulation of facades, and various building materials. The development also includes several landscape plantings along Main Street, Armstrong Street, and the eastern property line with a mixture of trees, shrubs, ornamental plantings, and ground coverings. The development includes eight 36-inch box trees, which were upsized to comply with the tree preservation ordinance, and mitigate for the removal of nine small trees. Furthermore, the development will have approximately 1,714 square feet of private open space in the form of balconies and a ground-level patio. The proposed project has demonstrated compliance with all applicable regulations of the general plan and downtown specific plan, including but not limited to density, parking, facade design, open space, and landscaping. Additionally, the project is consistent with several land use and housing policies within the general plan that encourage residential development and redevelopment on sites in established neighborhoods, near transit, and other resources. As noted, this project is a fully residential project that is consistent with the downtown specific plan, for which there was an environmental impact report prepared for. Therefore, the project qualifies for the Residential Project Implementing Specific Plans exemption in Section 15182(c) of the California Environmental Quality Act. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the planned, the proposed tentative track map, site plan review, and SEQA exemption based on the findings in Attachment 2 and the conditions of approval in Attachment 3. I am available to answer any questions, along with Mo Sharma from Public Works Engineering. And additionally, the applicant team is here, including Murthy, Ude, project engineer Dilip, and their project architect Palomi. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richard, and I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. And so I understand that you are here to answer any questions. Did you want to give a presentation or just answer questions?
Whatever you would like.
It's really up to you.
I'll answer the questions.
All right, all right. So we're going to begin with Commissioner questions. So do I have any Commissioners who would like to start the ball rolling with questions? I have a feeling we're going to have questions. So, anyone? Anyone? Bueller? Bueller? Okay, Commissioner Myers?
Okay. Thank you, Planner Richard, for that. I appreciate that. Okay, so I have a few questions here. I've read through, to start, I've read through the Neighbor's Letter pretty intensively, and I've got a lot of highlighted items. He's got a lot of valid... They've got a lot of valid good points. So I wanted to ask a few questions on and off about that. But I'll start with the builder. I appreciate, I know that we have a minimum of 100 parking... 100 square feet of open space, but yet we're upping it to 166. So I just wanted to note that I appreciate that, that we're not just only doing the bare minimums there. The... On page 22 of the project plans, there shows an exterior wall. I don't, I couldn't find a height on the blueprints, but there shows an exterior I couldn't find a height on the blueprints, but there shows an exterior wall as you're leaving onto, I believe it's Main Street. And I wanted to just ask about that. It seems like that wall might be interfering with visibility. So I was wondering if you wouldn't mind, at the podium, maybe answering, or somebody answering that? Staff or somebody?
I can start, and then Mo can join in. Our Public Works Transportation Team looks at it, and they look at the triangle of visibility. And so they reviewed the building, and they didn't find any issues with visibility along that corner of Main Street and Armstrong.
Oh, so there's the, there's a system that they go through.
Yeah, people, the Public Works Department will review it for that. And there's a, for your knowledge, the triangle of visibility is a point from the, like, intersection, and that they have to keep everything under three feet. So they've complied.
Okay, interesting. My other thing, then, it might also be for Mo, is the turn radius as you go onto Main Street appears to be a little sharp. And so if there's cars parked right adjacent to the driveway, it seems like that might even make it more sharp, and probably somebody has looked into this. But I'm wondering if it wouldn't behoove us to maybe paint a little bit of that red. The only negative to that is we're going to reduce the already limited parking on the streets. So I wondered if you could talk about that a little bit, if that's a possibility?
I will defer to Mo, and it looks like also Said from Public Works Engineering is also online. So one of them can answer.
Yeah, good evening. I'll be happy to answer that question. So generally, you know, that Armstrong and Main Street, E Street, there is not much traffic there. And so I think our transportation engineers, they figured that most likely that because it's not much traffic, there will be very few conflicts or potential conflicts. But if there is a problem, the red paint can be done anytime by city because street will be under city's control.
Oh, I see. I appreciate it. So in the future, if there is an issue, that can always be addressed at that time.
Right.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'm curious, the current restaurant appears to be open, at least it has an open sign on it. Are the restaurant owners also the builders? And are, and/or are they okay with the tearing down of the restaurant?
I'll have the applicant answer that question.
So they're not the owners?
Can you come to the mic?
Sir, this is my first time, so pardon me if I'm not doing anything right.
Oh, we'll yell at you.
So the restaurant, the guys who are running the restaurant are not the owners of the land. I am the owner. And they were my friends, I mean, they still are. And I, they used to operate one of my property in, on the Mission Boulevard. And since we're, we are tearing that down, we moved them here. And now we are tearing that down here. So we are helping them to move to a different place. So they're like a family to us, and we are helping them out without taking any money in.
Wonderful. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
So we're not going to leave them alone.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Could you, just for the record, could you please state your name for the record?
So my name is Uday Kiran Sista.
Thank you.
And then...
And you might want to just stay there, because I have a feeling you're going to be there a lot this evening. So...
Sure, sure.
Sorry, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. I didn't notice any visitor parking spots. Can we talk about that a little bit, Steph?
Yeah, so our downtown specific plan doesn't require any visitor parking. It requires one parking space per unit. And then, so the applicant is elected to go above and beyond. Additionally, this project is in, subject to AB 2097, so it's within a half mile of a major transit stop. So that means the city can't require any parking.
Right. Okay, that makes sense. So are visitors expected to just park on the streets? Is that what the plan is?
That's, yeah, that's the expectation.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. I know that's a common complaint, even in my neighborhood. And I, and I realize we have certain allocations being close to Bart and everything. I was just wondering if that was addressed at all. And then, on the, in regards to Amazon packages, I know that Amazon just double parks in the streets all the time. But is there a protocol for what we're going to do with Amazon boxes or FedEx boxes? Are they going to be left on the doors? I saw one box in the mailbox, but it doesn't seem very large. I'm just wondering what the...
So they would be leaving at the door, front door?
At the front door. And we feel pretty confident, I guess, that they'll be still there when they get home from work?
And I will add, like, along Armstrong, I'm trying to find the elevation, along Armstrong Street, where they have, you know, visible doors from the street, there is like a small, like, pony wall, and like a private, like, patio area that will keep people from being able to just walk up to the, to the door.
Okay. That was what I was a little concerned about. Okay. And then, lastly, it's about some of the fees. We've agreed to pay the in-lu fees, $559,000. If it's paid later, it's another 10%. How do we designate? Is it just the builder that decides that, the owner?
Yeah, the applicant gets to choose whether they would like to pay the fees at building permit issuance or building permit final. And they understand that the cost will be greater at building permit final than at building permit issuance.
Okay. And then when we add to that, the parking impact fee of 313-plus thousand, do both of those and all of those fees get put into the city general fund? Is that what happens to that? And who allocates what happens to that?
So the Affordable Housing Fund is administered by our housing department and is used to fund affordable housing projects. Most commonly, it's used for projects that we have approved for fully 100% of project as, to close the gap of that funding. And then for the park fees, that's used to maintain and update. Most recently, most of our park impact fees have been going to the La Vista Park Development to help support that effort.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I may, I may also add that by state law, the city must keep track of all development fees separately. They cannot be mixed up with city's general fund.
Okay, thank you for that. And on my notes here, my question was supposed to be basically just the park impact fee, because after two weeks, you know, you forget things. Anyway, I think, I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you. I did also have a question about the guest parking, so thank you for, for asking that one. Also just wondering about, since there aren't, in the downtown specific plan, any regulations for that, is there a way that we can incorporate some TDM or Transportation Demand Management strategies, since we are going to be encouraging people to use public transportation? Like, I didn't see anything like that. I saw bike racks, and of course, I saw the electric vehicle charging and things like that, which are positive. But I'm just wondering, I didn't see anything like transit passes or anything like that.
If I can respond, we can't require it, but I can, I will say that, that developing a TDM program citywide and not just project by project or site by site is the city's larger objective, and primarily because, especially projects like this that are super close to major transit center. These are the kind of projects we want to encourage Bart passes and TDM approaches to that. So the applicant can certainly take advantage of that if they would like to continue to promote that. But it gets a little bit more challenging for for-sale units, because it's each individual homeowner. If this were a rental project, the landlord could conceivably offer vouchers or something to their tenants. Of course, if you own your own home, you're not going to give yourself a voucher. So it is a little bit slightly different. But there are requirements for, you know, bike racks, and it is close to transit, so.
Thank you. Wouldn't HOA have any role in that, by chance, even though they're homeowners?
The HOA, in terms of, would the HOA manage that? They can't require, the city is not responsible and does not have any legal authority to enforce HOA provisions. As you can imagine, every neighborhood is different, and every set of HOA regulations are different. And so, but it is up to the individual HOA boards to enforce whatever covenants that their association adopts. And of course, that is a requirement. It would be a requirement for this applicant to get those HOAs registered with the state and obviously enforced before they start selling off the units.
Thank you. I also had a question. I saw one mention, and this also speaks to the letter that we received from the neighbor, and just thinking about the proximity to their house and their property, and it looks like it's going to be on multiple sides of their property. And so there was one mentioned in the plans of a neighbor fence, and, but there wasn't much information about that. And I was just wondering if either the staff or developer could share more about, like, what that would look like, what the height is, and what the possibilities are there to help with privacy.
So it's called like a good neighbor fence. So sometimes developments, when they are building close, will like replace the existing fence and do it. It would have to comply with all of our standards and codes. So in the front yards, along the frontages, it could be no taller than four feet, but along the other sides, it could be up to seven feet. So the applicant will, in our landscape and grading plans, can show the details, and we'll review it there.
So those heights haven't been set yet?
I don't believe so, unless the applicant has it. I don't think they're marked on the plan, the exact height.
To the applicant, do you have any idea of, like, what you, you were thinking, or what you may want for that? It's just as far as the allowable heights and how high you might make it to aid in privacy for the neighbor?
So, so we talked about it when we started this project, and we talked to him several times. And so every time when we talked to him, he always brought this point, which is his valid point for him in his perspective, saying, we don't want somebody to peek into his privacy. And we made sure when we are drawing, we're putting the drawings, that nothing goes into his privacy, and we wouldn't be viewing into his bathroom or bedroom. That was his main concern. And we made sure that was addressed, and that's not even be any part of the issue. So what he was asking us to is to put a gate into the facility, and which we said, that's a good point that we can consider as a gated community, and we'll put the gate, so that nobody can get into the property. So he, his main, the other concern, the main concern he was having is that the school right next to us, and school kids pass onto the building and go back and forth, and which is okay with us all these days. But he thinks that's not a good practice, because there were some, shouldn't be saying this, but he thinks there are drug peddlers who are passing by, and he thinks that these are the kids who's doing all that, which I don't believe so. Kids wouldn't be doing it. But that's his perspective and prerogative, and I would respect that. So to make sure, to make him happier, we put the gate, and we would be putting the gate, so that nobody gets into the, into the building and goes out without having any security.
And to clarify that point, after, we've had offline conversations with the neighbor, and they had concerns, as he says, with the walkway that shared against the other property long, along the eastern side, because there's just like a walkway and then a very tall building. And so they were concerned about people, like, setting up shop there. So the applicant has, like, agreed to put pedestrian gates on those two sides. There's no plan, and they couldn't gate the whole thing around with, like, a drive gate. So just wanted to clarify that.
Can I add, can I add something to that walkway question? I just wanted to...
Palomi, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Palomi. I'm the architectural designer for the project. I just wanted to add that our landscape architect has converted, I mean, used that, that used to be the walkway I had proposed, but we have gotten away with that. And now in our drawings, it shows a completely landscaped. So it is not going to be a walkway. It's probably going to be softscape lawn or landscaped area. And it shows in her land, it's reflected in her landscape drawings that are submitted. I just wanted to add that. So, sorry. And about the fence also, I think the fence that shares, is sharing the back, the backyard of the Model B, that is sharing with the neighbor, would probably, in our heads, would be six feet tall. If taller is allowed, we will add that in. Also, the windows are kept very nominal on the third story of that, those apartments, so that they don't have a view, I mean, a very direct view to his yard. These were the few attempts we had made for his privacy issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Palomi.
Thank you. I would like to get into a little bit about the look of the building, but I think I'm going to defer to some other commissioners to see if they, they also have questions about that.
Thank you. Commissioner Frankel-Clausen, do you have anything? Okay, Commissioner Goodbody?
Everyone's asking questions.
Commissioner Goodbody, do you have questions?
Yes, I have a couple.
Go ahead.
So several projects that have come before this commission, we've all commented on the mailboxes. We were concerned about identity theft in the city. And my question to the applicant is if, would it be possible to relocate the mailboxes to the rear of the development? I know that they are along Main Street, from what I recall, and I know that they're in a location where, you know, there was, it's secure, or it was described as being a secure location. But I'm wondering if we could take it a step further and move it further back into the development away from, from the street.
Probably this might be the question to my architect. Palomi?
Hi, yeah, so...
Did you hear the question?
Yes, yes. I'm Palomi again. So the reason, actually, that was, in the concept schematic designs, we were thinking of putting it there in the corner. But as design developed and more discussions happened, we thought it was better to move ahead towards the street side, so that it is, it's harder to be doing such activity in a public or such an open space than putting it in a corner. So, and of course, like, we just discussed, that walkway is an issue already when the neighbor's concerned with the walkway. So it was, we felt that it is better to put it more in the public view. That was one of the things. And the other factor was that, in our experience, the, maybe not in, not in our experience, but we think that the mailman or the, wouldn't want to, mailman wouldn't want to come fully inside and would just want to get, you know, a faster, quicker way of access, and, and then go about his things. So that, those are the few reasons that came, that made us come up with this idea of putting it in this location. Thank you.
Thank you for answering that. And I, you know, can appreciate the postal service's wish to, you know, move from, you know, property to property and deliver everyone's mail in an efficient manner. But, you know, when it comes to protecting the identities and the safety of people's mail and, and whatnot, it's, it's something that we can do to, to support that. And it's, I would just ask you to reconsider moving the mailbox further back as you had originally planned.
Sure, we can do that. I'm, I'm open to that idea, in case anybody else, or present over there, has something to add. I'm, I'm definitely open to doing it. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dilip Krishnani. I'm the civil engineer for this project. Regarding the mailbox, I had a concern to move it back, because we are running out of space. In the back, we have a pump. I don't know, I'm sure if you're looking at the T map on sheet three, there's hardly any space between the trees and the pump and the drain inlet in the back. So if you were to move the mailbox all the way to the back, it'll have to be all the way against the property line at the dead end. There'll be parking issues, there'll be garage blockage. The mailman had to go, go all the way, make a three-point turn back, deliver the mail, and then come back. Now, the location that Palomi is shown on the plans is right next to the entrance of one of the units with the patio, right there. So I, I think we can, we can work with, understand the mail thefts, we can work with, maybe getting a little better unit, with more, more, better locking system or something of that sort, a more robust system that, I've lived in Anco too, in my early, 15 years ago, and there were thefts, because it's closer to the freeway, and it's, getting in and out is easy. So I understand the concern, but I, I think we're just running out of space. We don't have any area left to put it. There is a pump, there's a pump at the end, at the terminus of this private street. And then everywhere you see is either a garage or, or a patio entrance. So that's my concern. If you were to condition it, to move it back, I would advise to see if we can work with staff to come up with a better, you know, final location. We'll work with the staff to move it if we can.
Well, we, we would, our recommendation is, is final. Well, we would, our recommendation is, is final, right? Or does it go to the council after this?
I mean, you can put a condition if you want, but if you leave it to the staff, you'll work with the staff to come up with a better, better location. If it works in the back, I have no issues. I'm just pointing out the problems associated. Yes, from a theft point of view, it'll be very difficult. But then from an ingress egress, and we also have to run it by USPS probably for the location. It's not just us making a decision. It's the mailman who delivers it also.
To answer your prior question, you guys are the final decision body unless appealed. And from my personal or professional experience with USPS, they have, there's been other projects where they've placed the mailbox in the rear of the site. And USPS has said that they don't want that because of the safety of their mail staff. They don't want them to go into alleyways or down drive aisles and have to do complex turns. So it might be that the USPS would not even allow it at the rear location.
Not to mention that there's a perfect parking, parking area right there next to the driveway for him to deliver the mail. So.
Okay. And then also just concerned about the parking. I, you know, it's, we've got a lot going on downtown and it's, it's wonderful to see this, you know, renewal and lots of projects and housing, affordable housing units that we've approved and, and our restaurants opening up downtown. So that's exciting. But with, with that also comes parking challenges. And I know that we as a city and we as a body can't impose conditions on the homeowners association. But I think if there's anything that, you know, you can do to encourage the residents to use their parking garages, you know, 30, 60 days after they've moved in, rather than using a spot on the street and storing their belongings in their garage, it would really, really help alleviate the traffic downtown.
We would definitely enforce.
So, so that would be one of the conditions, the CCNRs, that the homeowners will have to enforce on. I, I don't know if it's, if it, if it crosses state, you know, boundary, legal boundaries. But I, I know what your concern is typically two-car garage becomes one-car, one-car garage because of all the extra stuff that we do. So, and then they pretty much spill over into the public, public parking streets. But that would be something that we could encourage, you know, in the, through the CCNRs, in the HOA rules. But again, you know, I, I don't know if you can completely make sure that all the 12 residents are using all the two cars.
We would definitely have that added in the HOA and CCNR. And we'll try to see if they can add her to the rules that we are putting in. But we can compel them to just do it. But we would make sure that we request them to do that, keeping the people's other cars in mind and obloqued.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Frank O'Cloughson?
To follow up to the commissioner's point, and I know it was mentioned earlier about the parking, I've said a lot about parking as well, is when we have these mandates that say that they're not required to have the additional parking for visitors for that reason. And so it doesn't, you know, create more traffic congestion, which we all in Hayward know when we're trying just to go have dinner. Is there any way that we can look at some sort of mandate or some policies that we enforce something like this when it comes to, you know, the, the using the garage? Because I can imagine, I don't know how much these places are going to be, but I can imagine they're pretty pricey and we'll see a couple Teslas in those driveways and those garages. But to the point of, to my colleague here is, how do we make that something that's a part of all the new development? So we are not, we're not enforcing additional traffic issues with even people that already live there?
I can start and then Jeremy can maybe talk from like policy standpoint. So in our code, it says that you have to keep a minimum dimensions clear of any obstructions in the garage. So our code enforcement department frequently goes out when people have set up like makeshift gyms in their garage or other things that would block vehicular things. Obviously, it's hard to enforce because if someone keeps their garage door up closed, no one's going to know what's going on in there. But that does occur through our code enforcement department. But maybe Jeremy can speak to a larger policy discussion.
Yeah, I can, I can just speak to the policy portion of it. I will just say a couple years ago, well, actually more than a couple now. I think it's like going back pre-pandemic. The city did conduct a downtown parking study that kind of looked at the supply and the demand. And I will say that we do have, in some neighborhoods, we have a parking permit program. It does require a lot of staff resources, as you can imagine. And it's really at the discretion of Public Works and, and transportation. I think a lot of it, you know, there's the perception of no parking and then there's a reality of no parking. And so oftentimes what go, what, what is required in order to launch a program like that, there's a series of community meetings to talk about a permit program, what that would look like. There is also, I think, there's any number of other options, you know, if we have signage and wayfinding that brings, that can direct visitors to the public parking garages. There's one not too far across the street nearby the theater. It would mean crossing foothill, but it's not insurmountable. And I think those are, you know, those are our potential options. If parking demand becomes such that the parking supply is not there, then that would be something that our Transportation and Public Works Division could take a look at. But ultimately, it would be up to the neighborhood to, to really get that buy-in because, you know, regulating parking, it really comes down to management, parking management of, of the supply that you have. But we did do a study and it did kind of, it did kind of show results. Now, granted, that was pre-pandemic and the world was different back then. So, but it is a possibility. And so I would say down the road, if the city does decide to pursue other options, there are things that, that the city could consider. But I think that direction, you know, largely is going to come from council and would be directed to do some additional studies to find out, okay, where, where exactly do we need to apply this. But that would be a more kind of a consistent approach to explore the options. Again, there's no commitment to do that yet, but there, it is something that the city could explore.
Thank you, Jeremy. And second to that is, I'm glad to hear that because as was just mentioned, a lot of people bring, you know, we want development and we want to build in our city and we want to have more businesses, more housing. But I see down the line is, is parking and traffic comes up every single commission meeting is a study that we should have as we're welcoming new businesses, as we're welcoming new development. No pressure, not saying anything right now. I'm just saying, but I think considering we've said it a lot of times and the development that is coming, to consider that because we don't want to make the current, you know, homeowners or apartment renters inconvenience while we're building new development. We want to make sure that everyone still can park safely close to their home. So maybe something down the line.
Yeah. And I definitely think that it does, similar to a TDM measure, it does get challenging when you're talking about individual homeownership. Because in this case, the applicant is exceeding the parking requirement by having two parking spaces. It's for larger rental projects, we have seen them actually be able to not only do a TDM program, but we also see parking, regular monitoring that has been built into the project. So that way, their management of that, of the, whoever is the landlord actually goes out and frequently manages and better manages the parking supply to make sure that the tenants, again, have. But we, we don't, haven't really seen the unbundling a lot. And I think since we've adopted new regulations, it'll be interesting to see whether or not that changes people's use of, of those spaces and whether or not they take advantage of both spaces or if they only have one car, if they offer that to a visitor.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you. All right. So I am going to get ready. I'm kidding. But I definitely have the same concerns that were expressed by Commissioner Goodbody about the mailbox. And so my question to you is, what materials are you using? When you said maybe you could work with staff, not only on the location of the mailboxes, but the type of mailboxes to get a better locking system or, or that sort of thing, what were you anticipating using that you now think, based on the discussion today, you would upgrade? And how would you upgrade the locking system?
Frankly, I don't know how we would upgrade, but we would commit to some better system. And the other, the other option for the planners to consider is also a screening. I mean, it's all visibility, right? If you see a mailbox standing out in the front that attracts thieves and, you know, thefts, there could be some sort of architectural, you know, features that could be put in to, to screen it landscape-wise or architecturally to, to shield the mailbox from public view. That could be another option. I mean, that's something you can put. But again, trying to move it back may, may not, may solve one problem, may, may cause another problem.
But I guess to answer, be very specific to what you're asking. We haven't, to be more specific on what you're asking, we haven't decided on what would be the robust plan to secure the mailboxes. But we will definitely think about what needs to be done and see what would be the secured option if you have to, instead of moving back. Because moving back would create most of the other issues than securing it in the place that we have today.
And can I add to that? As you guys probably know, we had a project come back a while ago, Moore, on Moore Drive, which was like a single-family subdivision. And they had done similarly, like beefed up their mailbox a little bit. So they used like a higher gauge aluminum and then did steel hardware. And that was both accepted by the commission and ultimately council in that project. And so we are welcome to work with staff. We're all welcome to work with the applicant team to see like what kind of thing and maybe use a similar approach that we did to Moore.
I have one more idea. We can, we can add cameras, you know, safety cameras which homeowners can, one of the homeowners, you know, can monitor the president of HOA or whoever to, to see the, see the location.
And I think Commissioner Frank O'Cloughson had a question, so I'm going to yield my time for the moment. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to add to that point about the mailbox, which I didn't add when I was, I was thinking. So, one, I worked for the post office for 10 years. So I was one of those people delivering mail. And it can be difficult. I get that. But there's also been a huge rise, rise in crime of breaking ins. I mean, even I live in a residential with a gate in a home, I still have my, a locked mailbox because people still come up to my front door, even walk through my gate. And so to that point, coming from Santa Clara County in Sunnyvale was a really good, where my son, he lived, they actually had in all the new developments, it was a locked tempered glass around their mailboxes. So they had to have a key fob to get inside of each. And that way, it was well lit, it had cameras. Because I think mail theft is happening everywhere. We're not just in Hayward. And so just something we should consider. It's, it's a small structure that really deters people from trying to break in. And I, they had no break-ins. And it's made of glass, the mailboxes are on the side, made of steel, you know, the same structure. But even the mail carrier has a key fob. So the only people that can get in, get out are actual residents and it's not open to the public. Just something that we should consider. It's just.
So like a kiosk, like a little kiosk, but a see-through glass kiosk?
Yeah, it's like a see-through glass. You.
Like a telephone, telephone booth.
You walk in and go and get your mail at the mailbox. And then the same thing with the, the mail carrier would, has the same key fob, goes in there and puts in all the mail in. It's just, just a design option. I'm not sure what additional costs it would cost, but I know that would give people a sense of security, especially when I looked at the development and I saw where people get their packages. I get my Amazon packages stolen. So I, it's a concern about people stealing, you know, personal things. But there's ways that we can address it by maybe thinking about a structure that surrounds the mailbox. And maybe it's not this development, but it's something that I want staff to really think about. It would provide that sense of safety for all residents when it comes to the issue of mail theft. That's what I wanted to add. And you can now revoke your time.
Thank you. I wanted to ask, while we're on this subject, maybe Jeremy could, could answer this one, is how would we best put this in a condition of approval? Because I do think it's an important issue and I would love to have it, I would love to amend in order to add that as a condition that, and it could just be as simple as they work with staff to have upgraded material or steel base or glass or whatever. But I would just want to make sure that we are wording it in a way so that we really are getting the best option for the residents.
I will let Mike Behelia, our city attorney who's online, respond in case I miss anything. I think in general, and Mike, please correct me if I'm wrong, if the applicant is agreeing to certain additional security provisions as part of the project, we can likely include those provisions in there. However, the commission can't require something over and above without the applicant's consent. But Mike, please feel free to, to correct me if I misstated.
Yeah, that's accurate. Could you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. What Jeremy stated is, is accurate. This is an SB 330 project, but it sounds like a fairly reasonable request and it can certainly be proposed to the applicant.
And the language that you think it would be the most solid as far as getting to what we want to get to and having the result that we want to have, would that be something as simple as work with city staff to have a secure mailbox? Or should we be more specific than that?
I think that is certainly, provides enough flexibility for both the applicant and staff to come up with the, the most optimal, the optimal solution without, you know, too many constraints in terms of design. So I think staff can probably work with that. I'll defer to staff certainly. But if the condition was to continue to work with staff to identify a more secure location or secure solutions for mail, I think that would be appropriate.
Thank you. And Ms. Richard, is that something you could work with?
Yeah, I'm happy to work with the applicant to come up with a design solution or like some of the things mentioned tonight, like putting up some sort of barrier so it's not so visible from the street or adding cameras or stuff. And I'll work with the applicant team to find a solution that meets all the requirements. I will note that there is condition of approval number 13, which says that the mailboxes should be constructed of high-quality material with locking mechanisms. So we could also interplay to have certain materials as the applicant has been amendable to increasing the strength of the material that the box is actually made out of.
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Ma'am, this is what I would like to ask you. And it's, you can say, yes, this is possible or it's not possible. Instead of having this as a condition, you give us an opportunity and we would come up with a design with all honesty to secure the mailbox. And if it doesn't happen the way you think it, it can be, then you can always put that as a condition. But this shouldn't be part of a condition, but we will do with all honesty to, we take your concern, with all honesty, we'll come up with a plan to make this happen. If that's okay with you.
Go ahead, Ms. Richard.
I'll just go in. I'm not entirely certain what the applicant is asking, but I think that staff has heard your guys' concerns loud and clear. And we're happy to look, work through it through the building permit process rather than hold up their entitlement to deal with a issue, a small issue of design.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That answers my questions. Well, about that. So I have more questions. So I wanted to ask the, I want, I think I'm getting to what Commissioner Patterson was about to get into. And she decided to let me do it instead. I find that the architecture is really, really industrial looking, very boxy. It doesn't look, I, I just, I'm trying to find a diplomatic way to say that I hate the architecture. Oh, I think I just said it. I do not like it at all. I think that it is not pleasing to the eye. I think it is one of the busiest thoroughfares in our city and that every time somebody drives to our city, they're going to see those buildings. And especially from the outside, they just look, they just look like boxes to me, just big boxes. Was there any other discussion of maybe any other design? Or is there a reason that they need to look like this for any particular reason? Or is, are they just unattractive by chance? Or is it on purpose?
That's the question to my architect Palomi.
So, hi, Palomi again. Well, we've been trying to, what I've been trying to focus on is to maximize. Well, we've been trying to, what I've been trying to focus on is to maximize the client's request in wanting the size of the rooms in the, in the, each home, and also accommodating the other requirements, open space requirements, and building height requirements and things like that. And also not having the, the main street look very, like a big, like a big chunk of sidewalls. So in creating, creating that and, you know, other things, the Armstrong Street looks dull, and I agree with you, even none of us are a big fan, and we are continually working on it to maybe do some finishes or have more interest. Maybe I can do some thing with the roofline there. But other than that, I'm, again, open to, if you guys have any specific likings, please do share, and I will consider them. That's all I can say, is to make it look better so that it's not so hated. Thank you.
No, I understand. It sounds like it's boxy because of the rooms, the size and the size of each individual rooms that, that the applicant wanted inside of the building. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. I understand now. That makes sense to me. Still don't like it, but it makes sense. I want to go on to another topic, and I just want, this is just more curiosity's sake. It said that the trees were upsized to 36-inch boxes. Is that because 36-inch boxes are better than the 24-inch? Or what was the purpose of that?
I'll do my best to speak on behalf of our landscape architect, but when we do tree mitigation, they, you know, do an arborist report, they have the value of it. And so a 24-inch box is obviously, costs less, and that's our requirement. So when you upsize it, that's how you're getting that mitigation, because those trees are more expensive, because they are larger. And also, you know, they are at a more mature state than a 24-inch box, so they already have a greater visual impact upon installation.
Thank you. That was an excellent explanation. I really appreciate that.
I sit right next to the landscape architect.
That's awesome, awesome. I think you might have another career as a landscape. Then also for the applicant, I noticed that it's solar panel ready, but there aren't any solar panels. Is that correct?
There are not solar panels yet.
No. Probably, if it says solar panel ready, I think whatever the code, code, minimum code is for entitlement.
The, the code will, I think the code does require solar panels. So that is a building code requirement. There's really no option. They have to do it if they want to build their project.
And the EV.
Anywhere in the state, it's state requirement.
We will consider that.
And the EV chargers, are they, is that EV charger ready, or are there EV chargers that are working?
Our reach code requires that they just be EV charger ready. They don't have to install it for this project. But then the, the, because it is an ownership project, unlike a rental one, I mean, there are lots of property owners who own electric vehicles, and then they will put in the charger because they want it.
Got it. Okay. Did you have something you wanted to add?
We can consider one charging point at each garage.
Okay. Okay. So you would consider one charging.
So we are giving a charger point in, inside the garage.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I, I missed that. Yeah. I also, hold on just a second, let me make sure I answer all my questions. It said the applicant on, I think it's condition 122, applicant shall install street lighting along the project on Armstrong Street. And I wasn't sure, was that just during construction, or is that permanent street lighting on that street?
Can you repeat the condition number?
I believe it was 122 is what I wrote down. I apologize if I am incorrect, but I think it's 122.
Yeah, that is permanent street lighting.
Oh, it is. Okay. Just wanted to double-check that. And.
Yeah, this is Mo Sharma, it's a Public Works condition. Yes, it is permanent street lights.
Thank you. It said also that the, and maybe I misread this, but it said that the trees have all been removed from the project site already? Is that right, or they haven't been removed?
No, the trees are still there as I walked by it a couple days ago. Some of them are in extremely poor condition though.
Okay.
That might be why it's noted.
As far as building of the project, and I know earlier you said that the, or someone said that you weren't particularly worried about traffic because it's, it's a low-traffic area. I'm concerned, and I'm wondering if there's any thought, if any thought has been given to the fact that it is really, there's really a lot of traffic between 8:00 and 8:30 in the morning and like 3:00 and 3:30 in the afternoon, when the Bret Hart Middle School kids get dropped off and picked up. Is there, has there been any thought to working around those hours so that there, it isn't super congested for parents who are trying to either come or pick up or drop off their children?
So the, they don't come into.
I can respond, and Mo can certainly chime in. What I was going to say is that as part of any construction, they will be required to do a traffic control plan to make sure that they're not closing off the road during times when the roadways are needed the most. And so that would be something that staff would continue to look at and evaluate before permits were issued. Mo, please feel to chime in if I, again, if I misstated anything.
Thank you. Yes, you are correct that that's the typical condition we have on our permits, that the working hour will be limited between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM.
Great. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
I can add also, I am Saith Sabi, Public Works. We also keep an eye on the ongoing construction. If we receive any complaints, or if we basically notice from our construction inspection staff that there is a major impact to the traffic, we will always reconsider those hours and bring it up to a point that the impact is mitigated.
Great. Thank you so much. Those are all the questions I have right now. Does any other commissioner have any other questions? Commissioner Patterson.
Thank you, Chair. So just to elaborate a little bit about the design, so I understand the need for the, the boxiness. What other design elements, though, could you, like, did you consider putting around it to even make it look a little bit different? Or I'm just, I'm curious if there's.
So, Palomi, you want to take the question?
Yeah, so I think cladding is one of the things we could do, or roofline change is something that we could do. I think roofline on Armstrong Street is what, what is giving you that effect when it comes to looking at the sheets. But I was, you know, we are using a lot of stone glazing and different textures on stucco panels and things like that. So for now, I was just thinking of maybe adding some features on top of the elevation and changing the roofline. That, that is the only, only things that come to my mind right now.
I will note that this project had to comply with all objective design standards, because it was finalled after our new objective design project, which had like standards about recessing and massing and like how much material changes and things. So the applicant, throughout our process with them and evaluating the application, had to add some like dividing bands and Oriels or other things to kind of create, break up the like boxy facade.
This is just a question for staff, because I'm having trouble remembering tonight, but are, where are we in the process of our architectural design point system? And would that apply to something like this in the future?
So this is in the downtown specific plan, which was already extremely prescriptive in design. So we, our efforts for, through the Hayward residential design study, we're focused on just objectifying the already designed standards on that. The point systems will be seen for our standard districts, so RM, RL, RH. And then I believe they were also added to the Mission Boulevard code, but I don't have it in front of me. So, but the downtown code already had very, very prescriptive design standards upon its initial adoption, so we just worked to make them objective and enforceable.
Thank you. Any other commissioner questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Mike.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. This is for Palomi. And I'm no architect at all, but just a thought, after all of this discussion, I know we have the Oriels over some of the windows. They're, they're very boxy. Some of the other windows, maybe on the first floor or along that long, flat wall area, if we could, maybe you could consider a type of awning or something that would protrude out above the windows to make it look less flat and maybe a little more texture to that wall. That's, it, it's just a consideration for you to, to do in the future, maybe.
On the first floor? Yeah.
Yeah, primarily.
Okay. Yeah, first floor is possible. Second floor, I am, there is a kitchen and a pantry, and there's a counter there, so maybe I could, I don't know how I can work a bay over there, but first floor, I think we can definitely do a bay. Over there, we have given a, because it's a bedroom, on, you know, facing the Armstrong Street, we were trying to give a recessed window there. So you don't see it a lot on a flat elevation rendering, but there are a lot of recesses in punctures on Armstrong Street that are, I mean, I may, maybe the rendering is not good enough to explain. But more than projections, we have a lot of recesses in the, in the building. But yeah, I will, I will consider the first, you know, trying to put some projections on the first floor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, and I know you've met all objective requirements, and this is not a demand, it's just something that I was really hoping that you could consider, and that you are. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I, I want it to look good too, personally. Thank you. Thank you.
I think, Palomi, do you remember, we have a windows, we changed based on the city code with Mira Hahn recommended?
Yeah, that, that is what we presented, and obviously, it's not satisfying the aesthetic, so we will work on it further.
Commissioner Frankel-Clausen? Did you have something?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I saw you. I do have a question for staff. And my question to you is, I want to make sure I'm right about this. My memory is that at some point, staff told us that they, on a small project like this, they would rather have the in-lu fees than the unit. Is that correct?
That is correct. To quote our housing manager, on, it's very hard for staff to manage one or two units in a smaller project with lots of staff resources. Also, these funds go to funding the like hardest-to-fund projects and funding those gaps. So our housing manager really likes when we get the fees, so they can fund some of the other projects that have gaps. And she has a long list of projects that have funding gaps right now.
Thank you for answering that question. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any other questions? Well, we got to do public comment. So I'm going to open up for a public comment. Do we have any public comment, Ms. Patterson? No public comments. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Now I will open up for commissioner comments. Or motion. Commissioner Patterson.
I just want to make a comment that I really appreciate you all being here and, and answering all of our questions. It means a lot that you were here, and you're so thoughtful and willing to consider some of the things that we were asking. I also want to say to the resident who, who sent us the letter, that I'm hoping that we, we did address some of their concerns as well, and it sounds like you also are trying to work with them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Anika.
I want to just make sure, just like when we talked about the mailboxes, and Ms. Richard, you said, I get what you're saying, I'll work on it. I just want to make sure the same is true for the architectural part of it, that, in other words, do you have any questions for us about what we are talking about as far as the architectural part of it is, what our concerns are? Because I really want to be able to leave here tonight knowing that even if we don't make a specific, it worries me to not have a specific condition that says that there's going to be some changes as it relates to the architecture, because I really think that in order to, to make this building, these buildings attractive from the street and to also look like they're a part of the neighborhood, they, they really shouldn't look like they're in the industrial part of Hayward. And I feel like as they, as the blueprints are now, as the pictures are now, they look like they don't belong there. So I'm, I just wanted to get your take on what we were saying and, and see if we can feel confident that that would be worked out.
Yeah, I've heard your comments a lot of clear about adding maybe a little bit more modulation and stuff. I can only provide recommendations to the applicant team upon building permits in middle. Ultimately, if they meet the objective standards, I don't have any enforceable ability for them to change the architecture, but I think the applicant has demonstrated they are willing to like listen to staff and work with staff. So I'm more than able to provide recommendations based on what I heard today about maybe adding something to that ground floor to break up the thing and make it a less flat facade, especially along Armstrong Street.
Thank you. So then my question, based upon Commissioner Meyer's question to the architect, is, is there something like the awnings on the first floor that you know today you would be willing to do that we could add to the conditions of approval?
I would like to, if, if I can come closer to Amstring and alternate home, then I can have like homes, some homes forward and some homes backward. I don't have any room to push them in the back, so the only more interest that it would create is to be able to move some of them forward so that we have that, we don't have a straight, straight wall, because it's very hard to make a straight wall look aesthetic. So I had to, I created those balconies, even though we didn't require them for open spaces, but we had required them to have the definition of recesses and projections. So third floor has, some of the third floor is recessed with a balcony, and some of them have a projection of a bay on the third floor. And then I was restricted with the second floor interior layout, and the first floor is a bedroom and a porch. So porches are recessed with a stone facade. And so the only other thing that I can think of that could make the Armstrong Street interesting is to be able to come forward a little bit, and I don't know if a tailor, if we have any room. I think we are right at like five feet there. I'm not sure.
We don't have the standards in front of me, but yeah, it would ultimately have to comply with our yard setbacks. And, you know, staff feels that like, that front entryway is like really to create an inviting thing upon the street, so to have the pedestrian experience maintained. So I think there's other like design aspects to the building that we could pursue if we can't do a physical break of the massing.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Patterson.
I was going to motion for approval with our two recommendations around the mailboxes and the architecture.
A second. And any other comments before we take a roll? Okay. Would you please take a, and please, you have something you want to say. Go ahead.
On the architectural, I think staff and the applicant have worked through the entire project and, and come up with this, whether, whether we like it or not, on some sections. I would suggest that the condition be limited to facade changes or, or some exterior visual elements, rather than trying to do a wholesale revisions to the floor plan or the balcony or anything, or protrusions. I think if you limit it to, to, and give ability to staff to work it out within the confines of the downtown spec, you know, plan, I think that, that may help, help move the project. And the other thing is, how do we, how do we, how do we monitor that? In other words, we have to start CDs or construction drawings, and if this is an open, open item that needs to be resolved, then I think there should be a check-in with staff to have a consensus on the architecture before we move forward, because these are condominiums, and they, they. Because these are condominiums and they, they, the condominium area or the airspace is dictated by the footprint. So I would rather not change the footprint or massage it too much. And maybe since you're concerned about the look and feel, maybe the awnings, maybe something else with the windows or, I think that condition should be a little bit more defined. That's my suggestion.
And if I could just chime in, I think the motion and the second were just that the applicant review and it's recommended that you maybe look at. It's not, I don't think the commission is proposing to require this. So I think as long as you're committed to, as long as you're committing to explore this option of, and you know, improving the architecture and the mailboxes, I think that would satisfy the commission if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
So yes, and what you described around the facade and those types of changes, I believe that that was my understanding of what we were recommending.
All right, Ms. Potters, will you please take a roll call vote?
Yes, I just wanted to check in, was there any conditions on this approval? Or, okay, got it. Commissioner Stevens, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
One quick comment real quick. I'm sorry if I'm out of line here. But I just wanted to just address the owners next door to this building. I want to let them know that we've all up here, I believe, read their letter. We wholeheartedly believe in in their comments. They are 100-plus year family in our, in our city. And I want them to know that we respect that, just like we respect you as an owner in our, in our community. We appreciate that you only needed one parking spot, but you gave two. And that was addressed in the letter. The open space for privacy, you could have put maybe a lot more property, but you allowed for a little more open space. That was addressed. We appreciate that. You talked about some of the fences and privacy. You were working with them. We're talking about the building look. The Navrodskis have mentioned that they didn't like the look also. You've agreed to address that. And you seem like a very kind, general, general person. And I just want to ask, I'm going to approve this, but I just wanted to ask that in during the build process, if you could work with the Navrodskis as much as possible, just to make this as little as possible. And I genuinely believe you. So I'm a yes on that. Thank you.
Honestly, there were several occasions where we, he came to our building and locked himself and and took the keys and went home. Then one day we came in and I said, who locked my restaurant? And then I was looking and finding who did all those things. And then we came to know that he did it. And so we went back and I said, he feels as if he owns the place. That's sort of, he's a responsible person, but he overindulges. And that's why we respect his privacy and we will make sure we know what he wants and we will address most of his concerns.
That's what we're asking. Thank you very much.
Definitely will do that.
Commissioner Myers?
Sorry, yes.
Chair Lowe, yes. And item number two passes with five yeses. Let's move on to approval of the minutes, the minutes of the planning commission meeting, February 22nd, 2024.
Thank you so much.
I motion to approve.
Do we have a second? The February 22nd, 2024.
I'll second.
All right, may we have a roll call vote? Commissioner Stevens, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Chair Lowe?
Yes.
And it passes with five yeses. Minutes of the planning and commission meeting of February 8th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
May we have a vote? Faster, faster.
Was that the same in a row, Franco and Goodbody, first and second?
It was Commissioner Patterson.
Patterson and then Commissioner Goodbody was the second. Thank you so much. Commissioner Stevens, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Chair Lowe?
Yes.
And planning commission meeting, October 12th, 2023.
I motion to approve.
Anyone, anyone?
Bueller? I'll second.
And Commissioner Myers, did you have a question? Go ahead.
I have a question about the minutes for October 12th. Typically, when I, when I read through them, I see that everybody makes a vote. And in the, in the minutes, it shows the count of yes or no. But on this one, I didn't see a final count. And I don't know if that matters or not. Would that be for you, maybe?
I'm sorry, are we talking about October 12th?
Yes.
Can you repeat what you were saying again? I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. So on the minutes, typically after we do a vote, it shows if it passed or not and by how many. And I noticed on October 12th, after the vote, there was no conclusion on eight ayes versus nays. Or at least I didn't see it. So maybe we can just, is it possible to just make the motion that with that change of it being added to that? If it's, if it's important?
You can, you can make the motion as modified to approve, to approve the minutes as modified with that additional information.
Sorry, can I just ask for clarification? So I'm looking at page 12. Is that what you're looking at, of these minutes? Oh, you don't? Okay. I'm just wondering if, yeah, is it? It was, was it a different item? Like, was it item one? Okay.
Was there only one that day? If there was, then it may be on there underneath. Okay. Okay, then we'll leave the motion as it is, if that's what that was.
It may not have been, so I don't want to take your.
So yeah, if we could just modify it to just add the the final count, whoever started the motion.
I'm sorry, if we can get the motion one more time.
So I would just want to clarify, I think, please correct me if I'm wrong. I think you're talking about page 10 of the minutes. It says, a motion to deny the staff recommendation was made by Commissioner Stevens, seconded by Commissioner Goodbody. And it looks like, oh, no, he withdrew that motion. So where's the, which motion were you talking about?
So it looks like it is on page 12, but it should have been above approval of minutes because it was the conclusion of that first item, I believe, is the issue.
Chair, if I can, this is Michael Vehelia on Zoom. If I could make a recommendation, we could always pull the approval of that particular item and have staff go back and clarify and make sure it's accurate. And we can always bring it back for another approval once staff's been able to look into it and make any modifications that need to be made so that it's accurate.
Let's do that, then. Let's just table it until staff can have that opportunity. Is that okay with people?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'll review my page numbers also.
Okay. All right. So is the motion withdrawn?
No.
Well, I assume that the motion would be withdrawn to give staff an opportunity to double check everything.
So we, so then we need a motion to table.
I believe we're just going to move it to another agenda date.
Do we need a motion to actually, so we need the first motion to be withdrawn? And then we, do we need a motion to table it to the next meeting?
To continue it to the next meeting.
No, we don't need a formally a motion to continue.
No motion. Yeah, okay.
We'll just, we'll just continue it.
And was there a motion that needs to be withdrawn? Did anybody move it? It was moved and seconded. So is that still on the table or are we withdrawing?
The maker, the maker of the motion could just withdraw that motion to approve and we can just then continue the item for the next meeting.
So who is the maker of the motion?
No, not on this one. I seconded. She seconded. Was it me?
I don't remember that, but, okay. I withdraw my, my motion to approve these minutes and we can table it to another meeting.
Let's go to Commissioner Report. Thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Reports. Let's go to Commissioner Reports.
Okay, I don't have much this evening. I just wanted to let the commission know that our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 11th. There's only one item on the agenda right now. We had a work session that is going to get, that per the applicant's request is going to get held off for a while until they have additional opportunity to continue to work with staff before they present their project to the commission. What is on the agenda, what will be presented, is the CIP Annual Capital Improvements Project List. And what the staff will be asking for is a recommendation to confirm that the project list does comply and is consistent with the city's general plan, which is a requirement per state law. Then the CIP project list will also get forwarded to council shortly thereafter. So that is the one item that we have scheduled for the April 11th. Right now, we don't have anything for the second meeting in April. So we'll keep tabs on that. And if that meeting gets canceled, we'll be sure to let everyone know. Other than that, I just wanted everyone to have a wonderful, safe and enjoyable Easter and certainly in honor of our wonderful Cesar Chavez and his day, which happened to fall on the same day this year. So everyone has a wonderful holiday.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners, all right, Commissioner Goodbody?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that both Commissioner Franco Clausen and I attended the League of Cities Planning Commissioners Academy last month in Long Beach. And it was sold out. So kudos to all the planning commissioners throughout the state of California looking to understand what it means to be a planning commissioner and all the, you know, rules and regulations that govern the work that we do on behalf of our communities. One of the most interesting things, takeaways from the academy was just diving a little bit deeper into CEQA, but also into SB 35, I think it was. And currently, we, we learned that the, the state is really putting a lot of pressure on cities across the state to develop streamlined procedures, I think, if I understood, for the affordable housing programs. And so it, I think in that context, there wasn't enough time for the legislative program to go through all the various bills that are moving through both houses of the legislature. And so it really having that sort of 30,000-foot view of what's happening in Sacramento and how it trickles down to the work that we do and how our communities are shaped by these various legislation really was helpful to me. A little daunting, but very helpful in understanding the work that goes behind the scenes before the packets come to us. So much, much kudos to our staff.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comment?
Yeah, and I, while we were there, it was, I learned a lot. And I was able to meet with so many other planning commissioners across the state and also see how they operated. And a lot of their, we had a lot of table discussions around, you know, when the state decides to make decisions that don't fit our community. That was a really big conversation. And me being a newer planning commissioner, it was pretty exciting to learn about League of Cities and how much they invest into city councils and planning commissions. And just, again, being new, learning a little bit more that you don't, you don't get in the onboarding here about some of the work that the planning department does. So kudos to you. You do incredible work that we don't see. And I know how much work is put into this because there was a lot of planning staff there, too, that came with their commissioners. And having dinner, I had a dinner with a group of them. It was just amazing. So I really appreciate you allowing us to go and paying for our tickets to go. That was a very informative and really special treat.
Awesome. Any other commissioner comments? All right. And without further ado, the meeting is adjourned.